Good evening. Welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Hall for Monday, August 11, 2025. We'll conduct roll call.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Tally, Counselor Sheffield are present.
Okay, thank you. New business referral. We have youth advisory application. Adele Hagerty has applied. Adele, if you could join us up front. She go to Greens, you're good to go. So you have your application and packet information in your packets? Adele has volunteered to be on the Youth Advisory Committee, and I think you can tell from her application and her resume that she is experienced and would be a great asset to the Youth Advisory Committee. So we'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for volunteering. Your resume is obviously, makes you well qualified to be in this kind of volunteer position. I know, you know, we just had City Day in the summer, and I think a lot of times, a lot of good ideas come out of that. So I'm hoping that moving forward between youth advisory and beach and parks, we'll be able to put together for the next year some good programs. I know that people really like some of the stuff we've added in the last couple of years. And this is one of the boards that I encourage people to be on because we've all been youth. So we all kind of know, have some ideas of some good things to do. But I just want to thank you for being part of it because it is, is an important segment of our population that I think right now is a little underserved, and we could definitely do more. And I just appreciate you being willing to volunteer.
You're welcome. I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, any, Counselor Sheffield?
Do you live in a city?
Yes.
Okay. How long you been a city resident?
Twenty-one years.
Okay, alright. And?
I live right up the street, on Mitchell Street.
Okay. Now, what, you know, what enticed you to be part of the Youth Advisory Committee with all your years at the, through the school system?
Well, I've been looking for something to do in the community that had related to children. And I saw that the committee was looking for members on Facebook. So I thought, okay, you know, I'm getting towards the end of my career, and I just wanted to be more involved in the community.
Now, are you close to retiring here in Groton or?
Maybe in a couple of years.
Couple of years? Okay, good. Alright, well, thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for volunteering. I'm a big youth person myself, and so I thank you for that. Do you have any specific goals or anything in mind that you're hoping to pursue here?
No, I'm just looking to see what everybody else's ideas is and what I can contribute because I'm an idea person. And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of August 18, nineteen twenty-five, or 2025?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, okay? Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For volunteering.
Want me to turn this off?
Nope, uh, no, because someone else is coming.
Nice to meet everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you again. Okay, next is planning. First thing is appeal of regulations and updates. So I wanted Leslie to come and give an update to the council on the regulations and what we're looking at doing in the short term and long term, and the status of where regulations are now. As some of you may know, there was an appeal filed, so they are in the court system. So with that, Leslie?
Okay, and I have a little hot-off-the-press information. I haven't read it yet. It's eighteen pages. It just came in about twenty-five minutes ago that there was, well, let me start from the beginning. So with number one, the appeal of the regulations that were unanimously passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this year, that has been appealed. There was one day before the court, and it was just to set up the future status. The opponent's attorney suggested that he may request some time for discovery and deposition. So, and that's the, the document that came in today on, on the judicial website is just his request for motion to leave the status conference portion of the, of the court so that they can do discovery. I don't know how the judge will feel about that. I have not read this, so I don't know everything that's in it. I will say again, as I've said before, that the appeal that was filed, I felt comfortable that there was nothing in that appeal that was actually enough to, I didn't see any issue in there that was going to be something that would push this off. So, but there's a meeting with the parties later this week. So they'll, well, by then, I will have read this or have talked to our attorney, who I have a meeting with tomorrow. And so that's where we are. It's just pushing the process. Our goal is to get it through the court as quickly as possible so that people who've been waiting and waiting and waiting to be able to develop their properties and be able to build a neighborhood on the Bridge Street and Northern Thames Street area can actually go ahead with that. So that's the first piece.
I'm going to open the floor for discussion.
Sure.
If there's any question, Counselor Sheffield?
Is there a trial date established down the line, or have they set something up? Or is this now like pre-trial conferences?
All of this is pre-trial.
Okay.
We've only had one meeting with the court.
Okay, and when's the next one?
Uh, Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll go on to number two.
And so number two is continuing regulation updates. We're doing these in pieces. So we initially did the general commercial zone. That's what's been on appeal. We're now looking at the WBR and the waterfront business and residential district, which basically runs down Thames Street from Broad Street down to Baker. It zigzags a little bit there. But, so that area, we're taking a look to see if there are things that should be changed, things that should be modified, things that would make life better for the citizens of the city. And we will then continue with the Five Corners Zone, which will take up the rest of what's known as the TIFF District that was established several years ago so that we have a continuous overlap of things that we can do in different areas, and they can work together over time in terms of money, in terms of land use planning and zoning, what's allowed and what's not. And those, those discussions for those last two zones have not yet begun with the commission. We did agree that those were going to be the next two that we were going to look at. So it is, time permitting, we will have our first conversation about that at the next regularly scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. But we do have a couple of applications that are on the docket. So we'll see what, we'll see if time allows. It's one of those things that we can add. We have a permanent add on the agenda. And if there's time, we'll, we'll start the conversation then. Otherwise, we'll continue it either at a special meeting, when it will be properly noticed, or at the next regularly scheduled meeting after, which would be in September.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
So the discussion on the next potential zoning change or reviewing it to see if we want it to change is going to occur either this month or next, the first discussion on it?
The first discussion on it, correct.
So considering the appeals that we have currently going through the system, do we have plans to engage the community differently than the last process that we did so as to maybe prevent that from happening or to, not just to prevent it from happening, but to solicit more public comment? I know that we sometimes struggle to get public comment. We don't always get a ton of residents here. But I feel like when we're changing the regulations, you know, I've gotten some feedback on some other regulation changes that we've done recently. And I think it's, it's our job to get out into the community to solicit those. That, that input, unfortunately, not everyone can take a Monday night off and come to a meeting or may not know who to contact, or they may not be on social media, email, or any of those things at all. And I think just the couple of recent incidences where residents have come after the fact and said, I didn't know this was happening, you know, to me, the defense can't be, well, we put it on our website. We put it out on Facebook. What about people who aren't on there? So I think we need to reevaluate that. Is that something that your office has done already? Or the commission has looked at doing a little bit differently or coming up with new ideas to?
We, yeah, we, excuse me, I'm sorry. We are always looking for different ways to get information from the public. And that includes not just formal meetings, not just, for instance, we went out and put outdoor hangers on everyone's door in the area of, of the GC Zone and behind for special meetings. It's, it's, so it's not just sort of the prescribed ways of getting people to talk and being able to listen. It's also when we're talking about other things or when we're hearing other applications or when we're, you know, run into someone in the grocery store. We are always collecting information. I agree that there are always better ways to get the public to be able to voice their input. I'm always looking for ways to increase that. And it is one of the most difficult things to do. I've been doing this a long time, and I, it's, there's not an easy way to do it. So we try and gather information from as many different ways that we can. Some of them are designed to be for exactly that purpose, and some of them are sort of serendipitous, and we don't lose, we don't lose sight of that. We are looking at, we're always looking at ways to improve that, whether it's putting out surveys, whether it's holding special meetings, whether it is letting people know that there are recordings of meetings that have happened already that they can look at because sometimes there are things they can't, as you said, they can't come to something, but we want them to know what's going on. We've also gone back, for instance, with the GC Zone. We went back and took into account the public comments that had been made during an earlier public hearing on, on other, on unrelated matter. But we, we went back and took into account the concerns from that hearing and adjusted and made sure that it was, that the GC Zone regulations took that into account. One of the things to keep in mind and that we do remind everyone of is that the regulations for the city are, it's important to understand that they are for the entire city. So requiring, for instance, that, you know, a certain level of density of housing in one place may have, may be objectionable in one area, but we don't have another place to be able to do that. And that's just, that's an off-the-cuff example. It's not a, it doesn't mean that the concerns of people who are around there. It's, it's a finessing of everybody's needs and everybody's desires. So we're always looking at how to, how to do what's best for the city as well as what's best for the people who are direct neighbors who might be affected.
And do you know about how many households are in that zone?
In?
The next zone that we're looking at reviewing?
It's a mix of residential and other businesses. So I don't have a number, but I can get that for you?
That'd be great.
Okay, do you want it for WBR and Five Corners? I can give them to you.
Sure.
Okay, sure. No problem.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Leslie, for explaining everything. Just to piggyback off of Deputy Mayor Depot saying, I, I know at City Day, I know it's not in reference to housing businesses and so forth, commercial and residential. But, I mean, at City Day, when you're explaining the rain gardens and all the plans and everything, I think it was a nice setup. I listened to a lot of the conversations that you had with some citizens. Some didn't belong to Groton City, but they listened. So I thought that was good. Have you ever been to, and you could have already done it, but to the farmer's market, maybe just set up? And, because, you know, a lot of the verbiage for it, people don't understand, you know? And just to maybe even, I mean, I hate to put ink to print and so forth and so on because it's money. But, you know, maybe just something that people can understand what these regulations are. I mean, even as a basis, you might run into some people who totally understand it, but, you know, others don't, and how that affects housing. I didn't know if you guys go to the farmer market at all, or?
We do. We don't, we have not set up a tent, but, and we were there on a very regular basis. I think it was about three or four years ago. To be honest, there are just times when we don't have the time. And it's, again, it's, it's about finessing it. But that's a great idea, and thank you for bringing that back to the front of my mind.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Leslie, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, the next thing is the Carty Art Museum bus. So they were at the City Day, and when Jackie was working with them in the beginning, they didn't have a cost, but they said they would ask for a donation. So that donation request is before the council. It is an open request for the council to put a number in. We are new into this year, so we haven't spent any money this year. Last year, we left approximately a thousand dollars on the table. When I talked to Ron and Jackie today, their recommendation was for five hundred dollars. But it's up to the council to decide whether or not you want to support it and to what level. So with that, I'll open the floor for discussion. Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, if the five hundred, if that's pretty much what they're asking, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Yeah?
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Do we know what their current annual budget is?
No.
Okay. I mean, my inclination, they're new. We, they haven't, we haven't done the donation to them previously, correct?
Nope, they are brand-new to us. They have, when we were working on City Day, we reached out to them, and they were more than willing to come and be part of this and to get some more exposure and to maybe, maybe even do future events here in the city.
And are they, oh, they're based in Shelton?
Right. They're not out of the city, but they provided services for the city residents, for the city children.
I, I agree that five hundred dollars sounds reasonable. I do want to make sure that we try to spend the whole, you know, it's only five thousand dollars in that community fund. So I do want to make sure this year that we try as much as possible to expend that, that entire fund. But I think for this one, five hundred, I agree with.
So for consensus, are we okay with five hundred? Okay, then we'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of August 18, 2025?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, Groton Utilities, water rate increase?
Thank you, council. We're here tonight to present our latest water cost of service study for the, for the water division. You guys are pretty familiar with Utility Financial Solutions. They'll be kind of presenting the summary of our cost of service study. But I did want to say right up front that this is the culmination of eight months' worth of effort by virtually every team within the utility. Plays a vital role in this comprehensive study. And, and we're glad to be partnered with Utility Financial Solutions, who has helped us and kind of guided us across all of our enterprise accounts. So with that, I'll give it over to Mark Beauchamp, who is with Utility Financial Solutions.
Hi, hello, everybody.
Good evening.
I do have a bit of a dathole coming back, but I, I think I can work with this. The PowerPoint presentation, is that something that you want to put up? You want me to pull it up on screen?
Um, you go ahead.
Okay. All right, I just have to request to do that. Can you see my screen? Is my screen showing up?
Not yet, no.
Not yet, okay. Still not showing up?
Okay. Nope, we got it. It's there, Mark.
What's that?
It's there now.
Oh, it's there. Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much to, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the study that we completed. Aaron went through the effort that was put into it. There's been a lot of changes that have occurred since the last study was completed in 2022. And I want to go through three areas. One is the long-term financial projection that we completed. And also, we want to summarize the changes in costs that we've seen. And that's going to come up on the right-hand side on the first slide. And then also the cost of service results. This is the third water cost of service study that we've completed for Groton, on the water area. And every, every time we made changes, we moved slowly in the direction of cost of service. But this time, we actually made, we're actually completing the process and moving pretty much fully toward cost of service results. And I'll show you what the impacts are as a result of doing that. And then the rate designs. So the very first thing is the financial changes that have occurred since 2022. In the 2022 study, there was an increase projected in operating expenses between 22 and 26 of around thirteen percent. But the expenses, of course, inflation came in a lot higher than was projected. And the actual operating expenses increased by almost twenty-three percent. A lot of that was driven by chemical costs, which all increased by fifty-three percent during that period of time. Then we had labor costs that were above our projections. The other part that affected us was the revenue side. We had a series of four percent rate adjustments projected, along with a small increase in sales growth. We projected revenues above seventeen percent over that period of time. But what we've seen was only an eleven percent increase in revenues. That's because water sales dropped, decreased slightly. Then capital cost, we're projecting seven point six million in capital expenditures. And right now, we projected at about nine million. That eighteen percent increase in capital cost is consistent with the, basically, the changes in construction costs for the water, water utilities around the United States. These are certain assumptions that we made with this projection. The projection period is from 2026 through 2030. And so the more significant assumptions are a four percent increase in inflation. This time, we took a very conservative change in sales at a zero percent growth rate. The capital improvement plans, four point four million in 2026, and between two to three million in each year after that. Now, one of the things of note is, in order to maintain your cash reserves, we're projecting the need for most of that capital improvement plan to be funded through debt. So you can see that, you know, we have debt issuances of four point two million, and then between one and a half and three million dollars each year after that. These are the assumptions, the major assumptions used in the projection. This is the financial projection summary without any additional rate changes. Now, in October of this year, we have a four percent increase that was planned. That was from the 2022 study. But with no adjustments from this point forward, what you're going to see is changes in the, I'll highlight some of these. First of all, your debt coverage ratio. What debt coverage ratio is, is it identifies how much cash that's generated through operations compared to your debt service payments? Traditionally, you want to maintain a minimum coverage of about one point two, which means that you generate twenty percent more cash than what your debt service payments are. We're targeting a minimum of one point four in our modeling because the projections are never perfect. So we want to have a certain amount of buffer. And you can see that each year, we're well below our debt coverage ratio minimum targets. And we're only at a point six coverage ratio. Cash reserves, we'd like to see the utility close to eight million dollars in debt minimum of cash. In 2026, the cash is projected at a little over a million dollars. We projected to go negative from 2026. So you can see that there's need for adjustments. Now, what we did, we're trying to balance two things when we put together the rate trap. We're trying to balance the financial stability of the utility with rate impacts on customers. And you're going to see how we attempted to model this. What we're looking at is, we have the four percent adjustment that's approved in October. We're looking at an additional six percent increase in January of '26, so probably three months after, four percent, an additional six percent. Then followed by three ten percent rate adjustments in October of '26, '27, and '28. Now, with this rate trap, what we see at a coverage ratio standpoint is we're moving upward each year. We don't, we don't actually exceed the minimum of one point four coverage until the end of this production period of 2028. Until the end of this production period or twenty twenty eight. Cash balances. We're we're moving from a cash burn situation, we're correcting that. And moving upward in our cash each year. And twenty twenty nine, we're pretty much right at or very close to a minimum cash flow. Now, one of the things that we looked at in trying to balance. Um, the financial stability with the of the utility with the rate impacts was. Using the cost of service results to move toward cost of service because. Your current rate structure is what's called a declining block. Rate structure where the more water you use, the cheaper the rate is. And that's inconsistent with the cost of service study. We've been moving slowly over time to try to correct that. And this rate track, we we actually eliminated that declining block and made it so it's just a single rate. For all the water that's used. And by doing that, the residential's impact is going to be drawn. This is on an average residential, a two point seven percent increase in January. Followed by about five and a half percent increases in twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight. And you can see next to that, this is the actual increase that you see on average each month. A dollar thirty in January, two seventy two in in twenty six, and two eighty four, then three twelve. We also projected these bond issuances in our modeling. I discussed them within the previous tab. Before I look to the next part of this, which is the cost of service results, I just want to stop for a moment to see if there's any questions. About the projections or changes in cost.
Hold on, we have a question. Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you. Um, do any of these costs, are any of them have to do with the Seawall project?
I'm sorry, with the what?
With the Seawall project?
No.
Okay. Um, and it looks like the projected. Adjustments include eventually a ten percent rate adjustment. Have we ever done an adjustment that high in the past?
I've seen a single year ten percent before we started the water treatment plant. We started some rate increases to prepare for the new water treatment facility. I believe we had one year at a ten percent at that time, so I have seen at least a single year at ten.
And then, um, can you elaborate on the blocks? Because I I've. I thought it was under the water that using the block fee system was actually a savings for residents. Because if they don't use the higher amount, which most residents don't, then they don't bear the higher cost of that. Flow, but that the customers that use that higher amount, like industrial customers or big buildings. Then would bear more proportional cost for what they use.
Yeah, so I.
But now I feel like we're saying the opposite.
No, I think you're exactly right. So like when we did the wastewater cost of service study and we went to a increasing block. That's exactly correct. Residential doesn't hit the threshold to to the next block. So they don't get the savings if it's a declining block and they don't get and they don't get the cost if it's an inclining block. So in wastewater, we went to a inclining block where it goes up. And so that, so more of the cost recovery was with the the industrial sector.
Right.
So what we're doing here is really we're we're basically, we're moving kind of in that direction, although at the end of this three year projection, it really just levelizes at one rate. But to your point, it it's, it puts cost recovery in the commercial, industrial, and wholesale sectors.
So this was a declining block, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, that's where I was, I.
Yes.
Had it backwards. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And you'll see, um, oh, I'm sorry, before the one, and and I'll discuss that further, actually. But is there any other questions on this slide?
Any other questions on this slide? Counselor Sheffield?
When we discuss, discussing chemical cost of fifty three percent increase, what types of chemicals are we talking about? That have caused this increase?
All right, all right, Joe, can you, are you better? Come on up. Whoever whoever's the best person to speak for chemical cost. All right, Steve.
Hi, this is Steve Dietrich. I'm the water quality manager at Groton Utilities. The chemicals that we use for water treatment, our primary one is polylumina chloride, which is our coagulant. That gathers the small particles together that ordinarily would go right through the filter. Uh, we also use sodium hypochlorite bleach, uh, which is our disinfectant. So that as the water goes out into the system, um, no one's going to get sick from drinking the water. Uh, we use a corrosion control chemical, an orthopoliphosphate. And the purpose of that is for homes that have copper pipes with lead solder. That that lead solder will stay put and the copper will stay put on the pipes and not come into people's drinking water. Uh, we add fluoride to the water to prevent cavities in the required amount. And we also use sodium hydroxide, also known as caustic soda, to adjust the pH. So that, um, the the water will not be corrosive. So there's kind of a one-two punch on the corrosion treatment so that you've you've raised the pH so it's not as corrosive to the iron pipes. There are the water mains, the ductile iron. Um, and then you've added the orthopoliphosphate so that, uh, that. Chemical reaction that could occur if your water is still corrosive when the water sits in the pipes overnight. That reaction can't proceed and it stops it. Trying to think if there's anything else, but yeah.
Yeah, my my concern.
The chemicals.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, how does the cost of all these, you know, why are why are they going up fifty three percent? I mean, from what companies are providing to where there's an increase?
Right, that that was a sudden and unexpected jump back, I think it was back two years ago, if I remember correctly. And we hadn't budgeted for that amount because we were assuming that prices would only jump a little bit. We go out to bid each time that we, um. A contract comes finished. We go out to bid each time, you know, and and solicit bids from companies that provide drinking water chemicals. Uh, you can't, you can't be a chemical company and just simply say, hey, I'll sell sell you caustic soda. Or I'll sell you sodium hypochlorite. It has to meet an NSF sixty one standard. Uh, so that it's designed specifically for treating drinking water. So that, you know, the provider understands that this is going to be used where somebody's going to be consuming the water. As opposed to like some industrial use or something like that. And so I don't remember the exact circumstances, but, um, something happened. Where all these providers, uh, prices jumped. Now, whether it was raw materials in some cases. Uh, for example, our polylumina chloride, uh, the raw materials, I believe, went up quite a bit. Uh, and so when we reviewed the bids, when they came in the last go round. We took the lowest bid from the provider that we knew would do a good job for us. But once again, those costs had taken a jump and we didn't have any control over that situation.
Yeah, so would that be factored? Are any of these chemicals imported? Are we dealing with the tariffs on the chemicals? You know, is this all domestic or?
Oh, sure, that's a good question. So back at that time, tariffs were not an issue. That. It it wasn't the more recent tariffs that that caused that jump. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything I. Everything that we purchase is manufactured in the United States of America in terms of our water treatment chemicals. The raw materials for polylumina chloride, the raw materials themselves come from a different country. Because, uh, that's just the source that our provider gets it from. But, um, other than that, everything, even in fact, the refined product is made in the United States in North Adams, Massachusetts. So, um, yeah, it was, we were completely blindsided by that that occurrence. And we were not expecting or anticipating that and but it occurred and and we simply had to deal with it. So, does that help a little bit?
That helps, that that helps a lot, I guess, as far as why, you know, the increases in, you know, in the rates obviously factors in with the with the materials that go into the water. Um, and of course, it wasn't an issue two years ago and like obviously, I guess it wasn't factored in. You know, this go around and now it has to. My next question, I guess, would be, and maybe that would, um, would not, would be the inflation area. Um, would that also, um, taking, I don't think it was in consideration the last time, two years ago as well. Because I think I asked that question whether inflation was going to be kind of included in the numbers. Are there in the numbers this go round? I see four percent, but I'm not sure if that was ever, is it factored in or we're just hoping? That it's going to maintain that four percent because lord knows, two years from now, it might be eight percent, so, you know.
So, thank you. By the way, yes, you did. You absolutely asked if we if we stress test inflation. We thought that we did a a pretty decent job. Um, I would say we definitely underestimated the staying power of some of the inflationary rates in a post-COVID world. We expected them to come back to some type of normalcy. And then basically it just kind of hung around, as you guys all know, for quite some time. So, um, to to your point, uh, we probably underestimated the staying power of of inflation. We think that we made an adjustment for that in the assumptions of this cost of service study. But. We don't know until we we see it.
And there's one last point I'd like to make.
Sure, go ahead.
And that's that the the impacts that we experienced here in Groton aren't unique to Groton Utilities. This was a nationwide impact.
Oh, absolutely.
To water companies everywhere and, yeah, it was a bit of a shock.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you. All right, we have no, wait, Counselor Piazza.
Thank you. Um, on the chemicals, uh, is fluoride something that's mandated to add?
Yes.
If I if I may come up and speak to that, sure. Sure, fluoride is is mandated by the Department of Public Health regulations for drinking water. For the longest time, since I started working at Groton Utilities, the the fluoride level was regulated at one part per million. Uh, plus or minus ten percent. And so it could range from one point ten to zero point ninety. Um, as the years went by, and it was finally in two thousand sixteen, after the CDC had finished studying fluoride. And looking at all the ways that people do get fluoride. So you you certainly get it from your toothpaste. There's fluoride rinses at the dentist's office, or you can buy them over the counter, of course, for yourself. So they came to the conclusion that it wasn't necessary to to dose at one point, one part per million any longer. And so the current standard is zero point seven zero parts per million, plus or minus point one five. So you can go as low as point five five, or you can go as high as zero point eight five. Uh, Groton Utilities chooses to dose right around zero point six to zero point six five. So we are in compliance with regulations. And, um, I know sometimes people have heard things about studies that indicate that. Uh, fluoride could possibly be detrimental to IQ for young people, that sort of thing. But I feel like the whole story on that hasn't gotten out there. Though those studies, first of all, took place in countries and in regions where the fluoride is much higher. Than the dosage in the United States. And there's some questions about how those studies were performed. The, um, the scientific reliability or repeatability of those studies. Uh, and so I guess what I want to emphasize is that the zero point seven zero milligrams per liter. Is a very safe fluoride dose. It's efficacious for preventing cavities in both children and adults. So, you know, it's not like once you turn twenty one, you don't need fluoride anymore. That fluoride still is benefiting you by preventing cavities that you otherwise would get with the lack of it. The other thing I'd like to say about it is the cost for Groton Utilities or for any water company to add fluoride to the water. Is virtually pennies per customer. So it's not as if, oh, well, if we stop dosing fluoride, gee, we're going to see our bill go down two dollars a month or something like that. You, it would be an imperceptible decrease in the rate that people have to pay. And the, um, the benefit, the established benefit for putting fluoride in the water, in my mind, is unquestioned. Uh, it it really is truly a benefit to, like I said, kids and adults alike. So, yes, the fluoride level is less than what it once was. It is required by the Department of Public Health. Um, they recently took steps in this last legislative session to, um, solidify that position. So the Department of Public Health certainly isn't backing away from from fluoride. Uh, they're they're validating that it is a public health benefit. And that within a reasonable dose is is something that's beneficial to anybody who's who gets. Utility drinking water.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I just wanted to, uh, comment on that.
Sure.
I'm a big natural person as much as possible, so that's why I asked if it's mandated. I have seen as a nurse and also do mission trips, but those were in other countries.
Yep.
Yelling with the teeth, but my own son, when we lived in Virginia, had the same thing from our city water. So, um, and I even got a water report and it was so maybe some people more sensitive, but it does yell the teeth extremely. And I I myself do not believe that we need fluoride. There's many other things naturally we can do. But for the all the other chemicals, um, these are all mandated, I'm understanding.
Yes.
Okay, so for the ones that work at the corrosion control.
Yeah.
You say especially for copper pipes. What percentage of copper pipes do we have in Groton City?
I wouldn't be able to say specifically what percentage, but basically any housing that was built. Up through recent history probably has copper pipes with lead solder. Now, lead solder was banned in nineteen eighty six. So after that date, they had to use silver solder, which takes the lead out of the picture. Um, so if if your home was built in nineteen sixty or nineteen forty five. You've probably got copper pipes with lead solder. More recently, of course, there's more materials that are available such as PEX or PVC piping. So so sometimes people are doing, using those because certainly they're less expensive. And, um, so I'd say up until recent history, typically it was copper pipes with lead solder. Sometimes in older homes, it could be, um, black pipe or something like that. But typically that black pipe is going to start rusting and clogging up. And any house old enough to have had that probably had their pipes replaced at some point. And I I wanted to mention too that I too know a family where one member of the family was got modeling of the teeth. The rest of the family was fine, you know, and so you're right, there are some people. Who are sensitive to fluoride and and thank you for bringing that up.
Right, that's why I think we should just need to be careful or educate ourselves. But in reference to that, I know back in some of our meetings, we were talking about. we were talking about people having to replace their copper pipes. Am I wrong? Because remember, we were looking at a map, who had copper pipes, who didn't?
This is about the lead. We're talking about replacing lead pipe, right, the lead survey?
The lead survey, okay, so I have it backwards, okay. All right. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Mark, please continue. Thank you, Steve.
And you have one of the best summaries of chemicals, chemical use and what they're for and the regulations that I think I've ever heard. I want to thank you for that. That was, that was education for me also. Just to move on, I want to go into the cost of service results. When you, this is the, the results of the cost of service study. And the water sales, like predominantly residential or smaller commercials, even though the system average increased to meet the target operating income, which we're not really trying to do at this point, but we were needing a 30% increase to do it. Of course, we're not recommending that. But, a 16% increase in the water sales part of it, which is predominantly residential and small commercial in that group. Large commercials show the need for a 35% increase, almost twice what the residential and small commercials would need. And the reason for that is because of the declining block rate that you have. And of course, the large customers are larger water users. That's one reason. The second reason is the usage pattern in that large customer group. The way they use water is not advantageous to the cost in a sense. So, that's the reason why we're eliminating that declining block rate. This is the fixed monthly customer charge. And the customer charge, that fixed charge, that customer get on a bill is, it's hard, sometimes it's difficult to understand the reason why that charge exists. And it covers fixed costs that don't vary based on usage. For example, a customer has a meter, the utility costs install a meter, repair the meter, replace the meter, send the customer a bill, maintain the service draft. Those are all factored in and put into that fixed monthly charge. Now, if you look at like a five-inch meter, which is predominantly residential or very small commercial, the cost of service study says it should be around $21 here at 1950, so you're pretty close. Most of these are pretty close, and you get into larger meter groups. Let me see some wide variations. For example, a three-inch meter, the current charges are $152 a month. The cost of service study says it should be more than double that. The same thing for most of the larger meters. The 10-inch and above currently charging $1,300. The cost of service study says it should be $2,700. So the other part of the rate design is to try to correct these fixed charges along the way also. So this is our actual rate design that we put together. And you can see that in the residential, it's primarily five-inch meter. The 1950 would go up 50 cents each year and be $2,150 at the end of the projection period. With the larger meters, like the 10-inch, we're at $1,300, we're taking them right up to cost of service over this projection period. And we did that for almost all of the meter groups. Now, the other part that significantly affects the vacators is the usage charge, of course. And, what we're proposing is that you currently have this declining block rate where the first 10,000 gallons is priced at a little less than $5.50 a gallon. $5.50 per 1,000 gallons. And above that, it's 4.95. You see, over the projection period, we're making those blocks the same. Over that period, all the residential usage would be at just the first block. Because there are some residential that use over 10,000 gallons a month. Now, overall, this rate change will give us a 6% additional revenue in January of '26, 10% in October '26, 10% in October '27, and 10% in October '28. From a residential standpoint, what they will see, the average usage is about $536 per repeat of water. And, they're going to see between, on average, that in January, between $1.25 and $1.40. And then, that's per month increase in the bill. And after that, it would vary between $250 and $350. So it's a modest adjustment for residential. Most of the larger groups will see closer to the 10% or the liar on the adjustment. And with that, I want to open it up. Any additional questions on the rate design itself?
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, I guess, well, I guess it is kind of a question. I think this is similar to what we saw on the most recent sewer cost of service for the sizes of pipes, correct? Where the discrepancy got bigger and bigger and bigger as we got to the bigger and bigger customers. And we did a similar thing, right?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
That's what I thought. And I, it is similar, if I'm having deja vu. And I, I do think, you know, it's a very, there's a lot of math in how it's done. But I do think it, it is very measured. Now, for these, like the, the numbers that are right now on the screen, is this available, going to be available to the public to see how the regu- regular residential customer, their increase is very moderate compared to the increase that we are putting on people who use a lot of water are going to bear a little bit more of the cost of increase? Because I do know some residents do like looking at the numbers, even though sometimes there's a lot of them, but to see, oh, okay, mine's going up $1.25, but looking at the commercial customers are bearing a little bit more of the cost increase on that.
So our, our cost of service presentation is actually online now. And certainly, we're, we're proactive about customer engagement, providing that this passes and moves forward. Then our, our general path is to communicate early and often with our customers to make sure that they understand the impact for them and their households.
And-
We did have a public hearing. No one showed up. And it was advertised, put out. I mean, we didn't go knocking on door-to-door to say, come on out, but it was put out and people didn't show up. Now, GU does have this on their website and I don't, I think this is on the city site as well. But, we are trying to make sure that people have this so that they can see it and understand what the impact is.
Last question. Do we, less related to the numbers, but I know for electric, we have the HeatSmart program where we go out and we test and we provide, I think, weather stripping and advice and light bulbs and all those things for residents to lower their electric bill. Do we have a same service or a resource for a similar service for someone that could check, maybe someone who doesn't know whether their toilet is running all the time? Like, not everyone is aware of the things that maybe are costing them water? Is there a service that exists like that? Do we provide one like that or have a reference for it?
Well, well, kind of, actually, with our Home Energy Savings Program, they actually do provide low-flow aerators for the faucets and low-flow showerheads, should the customer, you know, choose, choose it. So we actually do provide that free of charge as part of the Home Energy Savings Program.
Perfect, thank you.
In addition to that, customer service looks at water usage. And if it looks like it's out of whack compared to what it has been before, they'll contact the homeowner. We've had a couple of instances where we've identified either breakages or leakages or leaking toilets that the customers weren't aware and they were able, we, we pointed it out and they were able to fix it as a result of us saying, hey, your bill is out of line with what it typically is.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything, anything else on this slide? Counselor Sheffield?
Looking at the numbers, January 1, 2026, with 600 usage at 1.4 and then October of 2028, 3.43, that's certainly over a 100% increase, you know, after that period of time, from 1.4 to 3.43. Like I said, it'll certainly, you'll see the difference by that time with the increase of the bill. So, like I said, sure, you won't see it, you know, like I said, larger companies will prob- will have probably greater percentage increase, but over 100% in two and a half years isn't, isn't so great either. So, but that's what we're, we're dealing with, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not 100% increase, so just, just to, to clarify. But to, to your point, by 2028, the average residential customer will see a $10 cumulative increase from where they are today. So, I, I definitely understand, and we as staff certainly understand the impact to our customers.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to clarify, for the average customer, the increase that you're discussing, that's the increased number, not the total service charge. So the increase is 2.7%, 5.4, 5.4 and 5.6 for 500. So somewhere-
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. That's what that means, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mark, please continue.
That concludes what I have today. So, and yeah, if there's anything more, any other information I can provide, just please leave me alone.
So, the presentation that Mark presented to the Utilities Commission was sent to this council. I don't know if you had an opportunity to review it or not. It goes in more detail than what we went into tonight, although we did go into some detail tonight. And we're available for additional questions if you have them. Are there any additional questions right now? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to comment that the presentation is, and also the minutes are online if anyone wants to read them, because the commissioners did ask other questions as well. So they're easily accessible on our website.
Yep. Anything else? Maybe then I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of August 18, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, I will take a motion to enter into executive session. Connecticut General Statute of 1206B, Union Negotiations, fire department to include Mayor and Council, Paul Testa, Peter LaCant, and Chief Tom.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session. There will be no action coming out of this. Okay, then we'll do a recess.